Taking time out of your busy day to come here from our attorney. We'll introduce her in a moment from Allers and Cooney. Before we start some ground rules, Anne Schmiesak will be talking to our board here and to you about where we are in this mandate mess or potential mandate mess. And I want to make it very, very clear from the beginning that this is not something that Chuck Morris, Alan Armstrong, and Melissa Wellhausen has concocted to make your life more miserable. I can assure you that there's nobody on this table that wants to deal with this. However, as we'll hear in the explanation from Anne, we may have very limited choice. At the end of Anne's dissertation, we'll open it up to questions. Want to hear, we'll stay here as long as somebody has questions. And I will not allow comments about how terrible the rule is. We all know how terrible the rule, potential rule is. It's not judicious amount of our use of our time. We will certainly answer any and all questions otherwise. All right, with that being said, we'd like to introduce Anne Schmiesak. She's our legal counsel from Allers and Cooney in Des Moines. Helps Page County, has for a number of years, especially on employment issues. And Anne is an expert on what's happening in the legal world as it relates to the Biden vaccine mandate. So Anne, take it away, please.
Sure, thank you Chuck. I'm gonna maybe just kind of, I'm trying to figure out who I'm talking to for sure. So yeah, I want to make sure that you guys can all see in here. Yeah, my name's Anne Schmiesak. I work at a law firm in Des Moines, Iowa, Allers and Cooney. I've been there for seven years. And before that, I was an administrative logic judge for the Iowa Public Employment Relations Board. That's the state agency that oversees collective bargaining rights for public sector employees. That's kind of how I got into the labor and employment specialization. Before that, I was a law clerk for a few years at the Iowa Court of Appeals, right out of law school. So, and I've worked with Chuck and Melissa and different departments with Page County. I don't know, only five years now or so. And as you know, it's just a very turbulent time, you know, right now, trying to stay on top of everything. It's changing sort of day to day. But I've been providing, I represent pretty much exclusively cities, counties, and school districts. Then have been advising, you know, on a lot of pandemic stuff from the beginning. You know, at first they had passed like the families first, I can't even, FF-CRA, where they granted certain leaves for people who had contracted COVID or whose kids were quarantined because of COVID. And that was fast and furious in counties to develop the policies and implement those as best they could. That since expired. And what we're dealing with now is this latest COVID vaccine mandate that the Biden administration issued a number of months ago, but then enlisted specific agencies to promulgate regulations for different employment sectors, I'll say. So the Center for Medicaid and Medicare Services was charged with implementing regulations that would apply to certain healthcare employers. And that might particularly apply to, you know, like your Department of Public Health here or something like that. And like surgery clinics and things like that. The one, and the governor, along with a number of other states, did not initially challenge those healthcare worker vaccine mandates. But last week, Iowa has joined a challenge to those as well. But the main one that we're talking about here that could be applicable to the county are the ones that have been promoted by OSHA. That's the Office for Safety and Health Act, yes, Administration. And so what, how, that's been, the regulations that have been issued is if there, if an employer has 100 or more employees, that includes full-time and part-time, starting December 6th, you have to have evidence or proof of your employee's vaccination status, one. Number two, if you're unvaccinated, you have to wear a mask. And then starting January 4th, anybody that is unvaccinated or has not provided proof of vaccination has to be tested or provide evidence of being test, have a negative COVID vaccine test every seven days. And it's not the employer's responsibility to pay for those testing. They can if they want to, and I advise people about that as well. There's pros and cons. But the way the regulations are right now, that can be put on the employees, for the employees' expense. Now, there's a lot of gray area. And those regulations were issued, what, shoot, I think on November 4th, so 12 days ago. And there's 490 pages of them. And there's still a lot of gray areas in determining how you count employees and stuff like that. But what I can tell you from what we've tried to figure out is that they intended broad coverage here. And so we're basically advising, if you get a paycheck from the county or your expenses are reimbursed by the county, you're going to be counted in that 100 employee count. So including, you know, elected officials and potential, employees that are under independent governing boards such as Veterans Affairs or Conservation. So I'm sure, as you guys are aware, the governor has filed a lawsuit along with a number of other states, challenging the constitutionality of the regulations and the vaccine mandate. And what's happened since then is, first, the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals issued a temporary stay. Iowa is not in the Fifth Circuit, Iowa's under the Eighth Circuit. So there was some confusion as to whether it would actually apply to us because we were not listed as petitioners in that Fifth Circuit case. And the order was vaguely worded and difficult to determine whether it was a nationwide stay or not. Since then, on late Friday afternoon, the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals issued another stay order and was a little bit more clear. It didn't use the word nationwide, but it said that it was prohibiting OSHA from taking any further action to implement or enforce the vaccine mandate. What we're predicting right now is actually today, there's, because there's been challenges in a number of circuits, there's going to be a lottery or some type of random process where they're going to pick a circuit that's then going to hear the whole case and either issue a further stay or hear the case and ultimately make a decision. I expect all this is going to be really fast-tracked, probably going to go up to the Supreme Court. It's not like this is the first time this has happened in different scenarios. You guys might recall, like Affordable Care Act was very controversial. A lot of pieces of that may have were implemented, but then pieces were challenged. It was tied up in courts for a long time. And so, but I imagine this will be probably pretty quickly fast-tracked. What I can say is that the stay that's issued right now is an emergency stay. And that only lasts 14 days. So if these 14 days expires and there isn't a further decision, it's going to come back to the table that, okay, we are responsible for implementing this vaccine. And we can't anticipate right now whether, you know, what they did when they issued them on November 4th, that they said, okay, this is effective immediately, but basically, we're going to give you 30 days to get into compliance. So we won't hold you accountable for the first 30 days. But, and then the next 30 days is when the testing requirements will give you 60 days to prepare for the testing. Now, we don't know, let's say the 14 days expires and it goes back in effect. We don't know if they are going to say, okay, everything still has to be in effect as of, you have to have these things in place by December 6th and January 4th. Or if they're going to say, we'll give you 30 days from the day this stay is lifted. We just can't predict that. And I'm sure as you guys know, and I know, working with lots of different clients, people are all over on the board on this kind of thing. And we deal with boards that do not want to implement it, you know, at all. But what we're advising is that it's wise to at least prepare these policies or whatever they say you're supposed to have. And if you don't have to implement them and don't adopt the policies, you're fine. You know, if this gets all struck down. But in the meantime, we're advising to at least get stuff prepared in the background. I'm happy to answer any questions. I've probably left some stuff out, but.
If you do have a question to ask, you could come to the microphone. And the verbiage that I've been hearing from our employees is that we are voting on mandating or not mandating. And that's, I want to make this very clear, that we're not voting on that. If we do make a policy, if we do create a policy and have a policy choice, the choices that we have at our disposal would be to terminate an employee who is not vaccinated or to allow not, to allow the employee to make that choice, but he would fall under the mask if this order stays, under the mask and the testing requirement. Is that correct?
So if I'm following your question correctly, there's, the regulations allow for sort of two different approaches to it. There's one where you can basically make vaccine optional and then allow people that don't want to be vaccinated to do the testing. But it does say if people that, you know, aren't going to be wearing a mask or refuse to be tested or provide evidence of vaccination status or come to work with a positive test, should be escorted off-site. It doesn't say whether they have to be terminated or not. The other option is actually to enforce a mandate and say, basically, you have to be vaccinated or you're not going to work here.
Well, basically, that is what it says. Even if you offer choice to be tested every week or wear a mask everywhere, that's no choice. That's extortion in a way, this whole thing's extortion. Why in the world are we allowing, what's your advice to me as against a board member? Is OSHA couldn't even figure out what it stood for exactly, and they're telling us how, what we're going to do with our individual liberty. Do you have any advice towards boards that want to say no is benefit of freedom? I took it ooh when I was born into this thing. I took it pretty serious. I think a junior high kid in history class knows this is ridiculous. And I will not ever sign my name to this. I'd be ashamed of the policy, to a policy, ever. And are you advising anybody to stand up against us? Or are we just going to comply with whatever comes down the chain?
Right, and I see where you're coming from. And like, in my, I guess, my specialty or what I've been hired to do for clients is to just advise on compliance. And so I haven't been hired by any client to actually, you know, fight it. Right, but I know that there.
There's a lot of rights in here, a lot of individual liberty rights here. And we're trying to see how we dance to the unbelievable unconstitutional rule. And why we're trying to, it's kind of like giving credence to even sorting through this policy and, well, could we pay for it or not? I give it no legitimacy. This is the most bogus thing I've ever seen as far as freedom goes in my life. And I'm not trying to be theatrical about this.
Sure, sure, sure.
And I'm in the company of many governors and the Fifth District or District Court of Fifth Circuit Appeals seems that way. We need advice on that, in my opinion, on how we stand for individual liberty, not on how we play the game of dancing to OSHA and Joe Biden's unconstitutional grab for basic liberty.
Right, and I mean, and I cannot predict, you know, what the court action can be, is going to be. But I guess I'll just say, because I know that there's just a lot of strong feelings about it. And yes, certainly, there is some concern about infringement on personal autonomy and independence with this law. But what I can tell you is that this isn't the first time that laws have been passed that put the public health as a whole above individual liberty rights. So for example, this is a state law, but.
And state, federal, I'm not a lawyer, sorry to interrupt.
Sure, sure, sure.
Federal has never mandated, the state and the 10th Amendment of, just everything of this nature of the state, I see nothing in the Constitution that would allow the federal government to get into your personal autonomy health choices. Is that correct in that way?
Well, I disagree with you if I understand you correctly.
Vaccine mandate is what I'm talking about. The pushback has never happened at the federal level. The states have been able to.
There is a case, it's called Jacobson, I believe it's from 1905, where they did uphold, you know, a mandate for vaccine. And there's some language in there where it acknowledges, you know, individual freedoms, but felt as though when you're a part of that society and get the benefit of some of the public benefits, that your individual liberties could succumb, I guess, or come.
The federal government decides what happens locally, basically, in the whole nation. And that's normally, almost always, if a state sets the regulations.
Well, yeah, I'm not.
And the price of freedom is, is, I mean, this is unbelievable. So your basic, the Allers and Cooney is what they do. I kind of understand all this. My first time actually getting mentioned is to advise us how to operate this policy, how to carry out Joe Biden's plan, how we walk through the water.
Their advice is, I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, the advice is to, as fiduciaries of the county tax dollars, they are trying to protect us from these insane fines that are in this law. If it's a, if there's an instance of violation, this law goes through. The fine starts at $13,560-some dollars. If it is deemed willful by OSHA, that fine starts at $75,000. And as a public body, we are very visible. It's not like we're a 100 employee plant stuck in some remote location. We are public servants. And that's the risk that we have, in my view, is if this law, I hope it doesn't go through. But if it does go through and we have these fines to deal with, we have a responsibility, I believe, to protect our tax dollars. We could go broke with fines if it goes through and we are willfully non-compliant.
Yeah, well, if we're, where does that stop? What would you not sell for a fine? A supposed fine by a place like that, we don't even know what she even stands for. Where would we stop? I mean, if it was, how far would we go? Would we clean out the nursing homes? What are we going to do?
I can't answer that.
Well, I can. If it's wrong, we stand up against it, it's not that hard. There is a moral right and a moral wrong here. And the dollars and cents of some fine from some outfit doesn't matter. We've crossed the line there, you have to draw a line. There's no way freedom is for sale. This is basic. You can pick up little things here and there, but this is broad. And when they, when they're done with the 100, they're coming for 75. This employee thing, we started at 100, and where's this stop? And I was told a lot with all the mask mandate stuff, oh, it's just a mask, wear a mask. Who cares about your freedom, it's just a mask. I said, well, what about this vaccine? What's next? What comes next? Well, we're here. And I was told that's not going to happen. So we've got to stand up for freedom. It'd be nice to have, I'd like to have some advice on how we do that, how we stand for freedom, for every one of these people's rights. I thought that was the whole point, having the law and going to court. You know, just we're standing for liberty here, trying to defend ourselves, not how do we play along with something that's attacking and killing all of us in our freedom, our liberty? That's what I want advice on. I don't, I will not even give that policy legitimacy. That is, I don't care, they can write fines to the county. I mean, do not care. Freedom's not for sale, there's lost soldiers that have died for this freedom. What's that worth?
So the governor's office, it has filed a lawsuit, and I mean, that's on behalf of all Iowans, you know, in all counties. So that avenue is being pursued. I don't think it's, I guess, in my opinion, I don't believe it's necessary for the county to use its resources to also try and individually, you know, fight it when they're using state resources, you know what I mean?
Even answer questions and that like, because we got a lot of employees. What about just the fact that this is nobody's business? Your personal health choice is what you do with you and your doctor and your family. It's not my business. I thought that was in some major.
Wait a second, we're kind of getting off topic, I think.
Well, that's another question, because you're going to ask people if they're vaccinated or not. An email came out last week, who's vaccinated?
Asked for an anonymous survey of who.
How do we, if it's not forced to find out, how do we know?
Well, people had the choice to decline.
If they decline, they must start doing it like they're not, right?
Just for the, just for the survey, to try to put a number to, if this crazy bill becomes law, to put a number to what, if this board wants to choose to pay for testing or not pay for testing, to get a number of what that looks like. That's what, that's what that survey was all about.
And I'll just say, and this may seem odd to you, seemed odd to me, but from fairly early on, at least the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission took the position that inquiring as to a person's vaccination status was not considered a health-related inquiry that would fall within HIPAA. So I'm just telling you, I just tell you what I read about and learn about the law. You know, I'm not here to tell you whether I agree with it or not, right? So, but just to answer your question about that confusion, that's been a confusion of ours as well. And what we've read so far is that they don't consider that to be, you know, a medically related health inquiry. And I don't know, and I don't know the back history of that, if that's how they decided, like in schools, we can ask kids what their vaccination status is on different types of vaccine scenes to get them into school. But I will tell you, there still remains exemptions. And this, there's Iowa law, and my position is that this is not preempted by the OSHA regulations. The Iowa passed a law basically saying, and that, basically, if you, if you are required by your employer to get a vaccine, you can issue, you can, you qualify for an exemption for that based on a personal statement that it's against your religious beliefs or a medical condition. And that we can't add, employer cannot ask for further verification. At least that's how we're interpreting it. Just a written statement, a personal statement that I'm not going to take the vaccine, right? Based on religion or based on a health condition. And to me, that does, is not preempted. It's actually more protective of civil rights than the federal OSHA regulations. And so what we're advising is basically, if anybody doesn't want to get a vaccine, they give you a personal statement that says, I'm not getting, you know, vaccine, a vaccine for medical or religious reasons. You've got the documentation then that we've complied with OSHA because we got, and state law, because we have this statement now. Then it would, it would not exempt you then from the masking or the testing. But we're saying again, if you again say, I can't wear a mask for medical or religious reasons, I can't test for medical or religious reasons, that would something, be something that would go through the ADA process. But a county can be more protective of civil rights and decide, we will accept just a personal statement for even agreeing to not wear a mask or not wear a, that's a policy decision by the board. But it's kind of complicated, I almost need to map it out, but.
Okay, great. Any questions out here? Could you come to the microphone, please? Well, no, you're, excuse me, this is for employees only. I'm sorry, we had a public comment, this for the employees only. Yeah, microphone, somebody. Janet, you want to speak, microphone?
Thank you. My name's Janet Olson, I'm a veteran service officer, and I deal with a lot of veterans, and I know their opinions. The first thing that I'd like to say, if I may, is yes, you're correct, but you did not give us the full information. In 1906, yes, they did mandate vaccination. That was typhoid and MS. And guess what happened? Check your history. Then we started having abortion, we started having manged babies, babies born without legs and arms and et cetera, and that's all in the history book. I have chosen to take the vaccination because I had COVID. I got very, very sick from it, and I'm old. I don't have anything else, any complications. I've got a strong heart, but that was my choice to take that. I have a granddaughter that's pregnant, and she got COVID. What they did with her is they told her to go home and take vitamin C, vitamin B, and zinc. Okay, vitamins to stop COVID. Well, I don't see a lot of bodies on the street, so it must work. This drug is not tested. I will not let my girls take this medication, this shot, or any drug that is not tested and wait to see what happens with my great-grandbaby. I won't do that. I want that as a public record. I served in the United States military, and I served for one reason, and that's for the freedom of my choice for my children. And as far as I know today, I still have the freedom of choice and I still have the freedom of speech. Therefore, let it be known, I animally oppose the unconstitutional mandate by this current administration. And I will, in fact, if this is pushed through the county and mandated, and you follow this, where you are dividing us and separating us, they can't do it with colors, so now they're going to do it with this? They are forcing it. Stand up now, or you have my resignation. Thank you for your time.
And to echo that, I do think the forced mask-wearing and the forced testing is discrimination. I don't know if next we'll have different water fountains, maybe we're going to ride in different parts of vehicles. This is nuts, it's got to stop.
I'd like to, I mean, I appreciate everybody's personal opinions. I'd like to keep the conversation. I don't think you'd get a disagreement, Janet, that all of us think that this potential sucks. But if that potential comes forward, how do we handle it as a county and protect our citizens' tax dollars? Kenan?
I would like to know what your stance is, whether it comes down to money or freedom.
That's right.
Does it matter how much it costs? Are you going to just go along with the flow and keep your tax or your money from whatever you're getting your money from? Are you going to take a stand and say, it doesn't matter how much money it costs to protect our rights as a whole county? Not just your employees, not just everything. Because people are going to follow this board, they do it all the time. Well, the county's doing it, we better do it too. Are you going to go along with the flow? So you keep your money coming in? Are you going to say, no, let's take a stand? If it's going to cost $13,000, it's going to cost $13,000, but that's my freedom I'm paying for. All right, that's my question to you guys. I want you to think about it. I don't need an answer now. I want you to think about that. Does freedom, is freedom worth $13,000? Is it worth $75,000 of the money you're not going to get from them because you didn't follow their whatever that's illegal in the first place? I want you to, guys, really think about that because you're playing with not just your own lives, but the lives of the people in your county. And people watch what you do. They follow suit on what you're going to do. It's something to think about. I, for one, will not get the vaccine. I have health issues that, there are too many side effects to that that I will not live with for the rest of my life. And I will not allow my kids to do it either. But that's my personal choice. Now, whoever wants to get it, great, that's fine for you. But that's the way the county should look at it as well. Not mandate it because somebody said it was the thing to do. And that's my feeling of it. And my question to you is, how much is your freedom worth? Because that's what we're looking at, is freedom.
Just to also clarify, this is another area that's gray, and we're still having internal discussions to try and figure out how to interpret it. But the way I've read it so far is that I think that $13,000 plus fine is per employee that's not vaccinated and not getting tested or, and is continuing to be on work sites. But again, that's going to continue to probably be flushed out. So just so you know, it's per incident, per violation.
Any other questions? Well, I do want to, Ken, I would like to clarify, I'm not.
And Anne, just for a timeframe again, in order us, if we were to develop a policy, that policy would have to be in effect by what date to be.
So, I mean, if, let's say the 14-day emergency stay is lifted and not any further injunction granted, which I suspect one will be, but I don't, we don't know that. And we don't know if a court that lifts that injunction is going to change the timeframes. And so we're saying, prepare the policies and notices and things, don't have to adopt them yet. we're saying, prepare the policies and notices and things, don't have to adopt them yet until we find out what's going on with these stays and injunctions, but as of right now, if that stay gets lifted, no other action taken, the December 6th and January 4th dates stand.
Scott, employees only, I'm sorry, this, we had a forum this morning, I'm sorry.
Township trustees?
Huh?
Does it sound like a trustee or?
Oh, yes, thank you, come on up, thank you.
I just had a question as to how far over the 100 employees are we? Because there are several of us trustees that we could probably resign temporarily to get you under that.
I like the creative thinking.
I was going to say, yes, actually, with the township trustees, we're at 124, I believe was the number.
We could resign until this is all over, but that will get us under 100.
Now, we could have some people that wish to self-terminate and get us under 100, and it's not a problem.
Okay. And I didn't know how close we were. I think that would be a simple solution.
Unfortunately, that would get us down more, whatever.
Okay.
Well, with trustees, there's, Melissa, there's more than 24 trustees, and there's 13, so there'd be quite a bit more.
Oh, man.
I hope that this would work, a sideline thing, we can get this to get off our back, but they're going to lower to 75 or 50, to be clear, but yes, that is probably a real, real avenue we should look down.
I would, I would just, I would just suggest, Ann, that if we can't get that number down to where we're under this, that you dig in, and really show some strong leadership here, because we've got hospitals and schools, and factory workers and everybody else, and they're going to be watching your decisions here today, and it's going to affect the whole. And I think we're looking at a really tough winter and year ahead, if these mandates go into effect, we're going to shut things down, losing 10, 20, 30% of the forces, and anything from trucking, the county workers, the hospitals, and nursing. Take a stand is my advice, and legal representation helps these guys to do that, to dig in and stand up for what we need to be standing for. That's all I've got to say, and if it, do you have any good for me to resign, I could do without my $30 a year.
[laughter]
Thanks.
So, any other questions?
I think I have a legal question.
Sure, come on up.
So, if we go ahead and comply with everything that may happen, and we go ahead and get the vaccine, because federal says so, and then on down the road, say at the beginning of the year, whatever travels on up to the Supreme Court, and are they the ones that can quash whatever the federal government may have put into place and made us all do? Then what are the ones of us supposed to do that really didn't want this at all, but had to to keep our jobs, but oh, hey, now, we don't, we didn't have to do that? So then, then what happens to those of us that had to at the time?
That's a good question. I don't, I mean, I, it's not like there was a violation committed at the time because you chose, I guess, to comply, or were required to comply to keep your job, although there's exemptions that are allowed, you know, the medical and the religious exemptions. Again, then you might have to also provide those to also not do masking and testing, but.
I will join every church in the tri-state area if religious becomes my only option.
It is an option right now, and you don't have to actually even provide a statement from a pastor or anything, although I've seen those, but under the state law right now, you just can submit a personal statement. Now, if it goes up to the Supreme Court, and they invalidate the law, I'm not sure what recourse they would have against, you know, OSHA, or any remedy to individuals that did get the vaccination just because of the regulation. I really don't, I don't have an answer for that. I don't doubt that there'd be maybe some class action lawsuits or something as a result, but I'll tell you what, it's really hard to sue the government. So.
Yep.
Second, you have a lot of immunity.
Second question for the board, if we do choose to not vaccinate and do the mask and the testing, any idea what the testing for week costs?
We have some preliminary figures, and I don't know how accurate they are, Jean.
I've been researching around, and we've found some places in Omaha, but we haven't, unfortunately, been able to find any, and as of right now, we, I've reached out to the hospital, but right now, they, they're not testing if you're not sick. So with this being a not-sick issue.
There's not a price tag on it yet, then?
But we have found some, like Walgreen and some other places in Omaha, CBS, Walgreen, different heavy use in Omaha will do the testing, they range anywhere, some say free, I don't know if you're, you know, if you exhibit symptoms, it's only free, or if they'll just do them for free. We've found anywhere from $30, $25, $90, $125, all the way up to, I think, $250, $390, maybe?
But that's traveling, so you have to find a spot that's.
Yeah. So, I, and we just looked through Omaha, just because we felt like we'd find at least some as a baseline to kind of start looking.
Will Clorinda implement a pricing to be able to facilitate a local hospital?
When I had talked to them last week, they had said that their supplies were limited as of right now, so they didn't know in the future if they got more, or if this wholly went through, how that would.
So they may not even be able to accommodate us, then?
And I wonder, and this is just my own thinking, I wonder if you won't start, like in our businesses pop up, but do this more as a business, especially if we have multiple employers, you know, and every, because this isn't just going to affect, unfortunately, I mean, it's going to be any employer that's up here, so, but we've been trying, I'll keep looking, so.
So that's up in the air still?
Yeah. But as of right now, I just wanted to bring something as a baseline.
Thank you. We had a question come in through chat, Ann said, how can this legally affect elected officials who may be employees but are also elected by the people?
Could you repeat that again?
Yeah, it says, how can this legally affect elected officials who may be employees but are actually elected by the people?
Yeah, and we have struggled, we've had a lot of internal discussions about whether elected officials would be included or not, but given the breadth of the definition that's within the regulations, and the intent, the express intent that they're designing to have, be as inclusive as possible to get as many people as possible vaccinated, because elected officials receive some benefits and wages through the county, that the safest route for compliance purposes, which is what I'm driven to advise on, is to include them in that 100-employee count, I should say.
Any other questions?
But of course, it doesn't change their elected status, so, I mean, there's grounds to remove someone from elected office, that's also very difficult to do, and an elected official might be voted out of office based on their stance on these OSHA regulations when reelection comes by, it doesn't change the politics of it. Yeah.
So, I just wanted to say, y'all know how much I do for veterans, how much I've done for our freedoms and freedoms, and how patriotic I am. The only thing I see right now with our patrioticism just downhill, we're not supporting our Constitution, we're not supporting our Declaration of Independence, we're not supporting all of the soldiers that have fought and died under our black. They fought for our freedom, they've died for our freedom. How much money do you put on life? If I go and I get this vaccine, which I'm highly against, and I have a heart condition that was not known, and this vaccine, vaccine, that doesn't have anything that says it's a vaccine in it, causes me to have a heart attack and die, how much of my life works to this board? $75,000? That's not fair. All I want to say is, let's grow some, let's stand up to our, if you could call it government right now, it's not, they're not fighting for, they are not caring about the Americans in this country. When they start mandating vaccines for people coming in illegally, then maybe I'll consider getting a vaccine. But when they're crossing in, spreading whatever this is, COVID, I've had it, I have immunity, my immunity has been proven to be more effective than any vaccine could ever be. All I want to say is, please, if you love this country, you love this county, you love your employees, and you care about all of us, fight for us, please. I mean, if you have your guys at back, if you will take the stand and help us, we need your help right now, because you make those choices and decisions, and I understand it's coming down from higher, but somebody's got to take a stand somewhere, it's got to start somewhere, why can't EDP page found? Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to expand on the dollars, a couple of points have been brought up, and I appreciate that, you're right, our freedoms aren't for sale, but as a fiduciary of the county tax dollars, if these excessive fines, and they are excessive per incident, I mean, we could be talking about not having any money left. I mean, if this thing goes on for a long time, it could drain.
I wouldn't pay the fine, so, why would we pay this ridiculous fine?
Well.
If the fine is allowed to stand down the road a few years, I'd leave that, throw that sucker in the trash again, then I believe, if it's allowed to stand a few years now, we don't even have a country anymore. We've crossed an impasse here. Fines, they can write fines, their hands fall off, for all I care. This is freedom, like you said, people have died for freedom, got to draw a line, we took an oath. If I could make a motion right now, I'd make a motion, I don't think we can, I'd make a motion to throw this thing out in the trash, not even pay attention to.
You can't run a county without employees.
So, I don't, can I make a motion? Because I don't make a motion, it's not on there to vote.
There's, is to discuss.
Yeah. This, I will not even give this policy legitimately, and I hope other boards take the.
Question, as far as talking about the fines, I've read some stuff, I'm not, I don't know much, but, so in an instance where OSHA goes into a place and implements a fine, from what I understand, that is very rarely what you would pay anyway. OSHA's not trying to put anybody out of business, they're not trying to drain all their account, they're simply trying to enforce something. And my understanding is, most of the time, the fine comes into play, you can negotiate and say, we can't afford to pay that, blah, 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 and it ends up in any, on the dollar, many times. And that's typically the way OSHA operates, I'm assuming this would call into the same, same thing, is that, does that sound right?
The penalties that they've got listed there are in line and similar to what they find for other types of violations, injuries in the workplace, I can say that, and I would agree with you that when OSHA comes in and does an investigation or finds a violation, there is an opportunity to negotiate. What I can say is that it also really, a lot of times, feels like you're at the mercy of OSHA, and you have to, you know, be, you don't have a whole lot of leverage, but that's true, they do, they do have historically negotiated for a reduced fine than what they initially charged you with. Pennies on the dollar, I probably wouldn't agree with, but I think that's a fair and good point to make.
In what way do they have to implement getting money from us? Sorry, I have a question, so how do, how can they get money from us?
I mean, they come in and they do, yeah, they find you.
In time, what makes it right to check?
Well, I mean, I, I mean.
I wouldn't sign that check.
I guess it's enforceable, like, you know, any other type of.
How? What are they going to do? They're going to throw all us in jail? What are they going to do? Yeah. It's fine, it's an unconstitutional, and if this fine, I don't believe it'll stand, I don't think any of us think it's crazy, they're going to stand, and we're not a country anymore. If it does stand, then we've got a whole lot of other problems, and we've got a big problem, bigger problem than some little OSHA guy right there.
Well, and that's all I was trying to make the point, is if you, would guys would decide to say, you know, we're just, we're not going to do this, we're going to take a stand, whatever you decide to do, you're not looking at $75,000 or $14,000. They're, OSHA's not going to come in and drain, because then you have to levy more money to cover fines. They're not going to force you to do that. I mean, I can't say that they won't, but that's not what the government's going to come in and force you to levy more money to pay your fines.
The other thing I will point out, though, is that, and that we're trying to track as well, is that there were states that initially resisted and refused to enforce the healthcare worker vaccine mandates, and even the state OSHA agencies were not going to enforce it, and the federal OSHA agency came in and is enforcing it themselves. So I'm saying, if Iowa refused to enforce the OSHA regulations, if that stay is lifted and the injunction isn't granted, and Iowa OSHA stands behind the governor or something and says, we're not enforcing it, the federal OSHA may come in, and negotiating with them might be much more difficult than the state on those penalties.
How do they make us pay? That'd be a good legal question. How do, how could they get money out of us? They can send bills, bill, end of time, I mean, what, how do they get their money?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of different ways that the federal government can use, I mean, and they have done it in the past, so, for example, they kind of, I guess, incentivized or maybe punished states that wouldn't adopt seatbelt laws, and say, we're not going to give you funding for your secondary roads anymore, if you're not going to, you know, we're not going to fund your DOT and things like that. So there's different ways that they can use carrots, you know, or sticks, if you refuse compliance.
Might be time to wean, do a wean here.
So, how does, how are they going to find out? That was another question I had.
How will they find out?
Yeah, I mean, as far as, you've got to report, somebody's got to report something, and.
Well, we're being reported right now, I mean, we're on Zoom, we're on KMA land, we're on.
Not reporting, reporting, reporting who is and who isn't. Oh, I see. Because how, how is OSHA going to never come in and believe that?
I'm just going to say, for every one person that's been vaccinated and believes in it, there's probably another person that has been unvaccinated that doesn't believe in it. For those people that are vaccinated and believe in it, and they hear the negativism, would they go out and report? And don't think that within the county employees?
Oh, sure.
It's probably 50/50, so, Jason, in all fairness, for everybody that might be unhappy today and here, there probably is that same number of people sitting outside the room thinking, what's going to happen? Well, they have an urge to file a complaint.
They might.
Well, you can't tell me that they wouldn't, because for as much question that this group has had, there's that same group out there that's got the same question if it doesn't. So, it's not if they might, what if they do?
Well, for sure, and that's, that'd be the only way that they're going to find.
Where are they?
They're going to find out because the county has to report to them.
But the other item is, when it goes into the news, just like KMA last night, and the school board in Canada, the discussion, there's people that read that, and there's Facebook comments, people read those things. That's all it takes, is one person out there to file a complaint, whoever that person is, who knows who it will be? It could be anybody, it could be somebody from $10 to $20.
So, the other question I had, disregarding that, and on to the other subject, just kind of piggybacking off what Ann asked, as far as elected officials, and there is a process to, you know, if an elected official refuses to do it, to comply in any way at all, are they legitimately actually going to lose their job?
Elected or appointed?
Yeah.
And?
That would be an Ann question.
So, there's Iowa code section that provides the grounds for seeking removal of an elected official from office, and one is pretty general, it's sort of neglect or maladministration of duty. It's really, there's a pretty high standard for removing an elected official from office, and I'm not sure whether a good faith, you know, belief in voting against, you know, or advocating against following federal law would amount to neglect or maladministration. I mean, you see what I mean?
Yeah, so, so then the question, what I'm getting at then is if they, or, you know, I don't think that would apply to appointed, you know, we've got two different appointed people in here, and then some elected people, I mean, are you, as a board or as department heads, I guess, are, are we or you prepared to just start firing people that won't comply? I mean, because I, that's what it's going to come down to, I mean, I don't think people should quit, I think they, I mean, it's to their benefit to get fired for. I think they, I mean, it's to their benefit to get fired for unemployment benefits if nothing else. And so if it gets enforced, is it determined right now that we're gonna start firing people that won't comply? Cause that's what it's gonna come down to and elected officials are gonna have more protection, appointed officials are probably gonna have more protection.
What's the Department of Revenue and Finance say for appointed, Jason?
What do you mean?
What do they say? They're your kind of, your mothership.
As far as for Iowa getting fired?
Yeah, what would happen?
For me personally, which I'm gonna be different than.
Cause I'm sure the OSHA is affected at the state level.
Right.
They are probably aware of it. Have you questioned them?
I, I actually, I had a district meeting with other counties and I asked all the other assessors in the Southwest District, have any of them, their counties, even talked about it? All of them said, no, they haven't even mentioned anything yet. So Page County, the only one in the Southwest District that I'm aware of, and I just had this meeting on Friday, that are even, even addressing it in such a way that employees know something.
Well, I know Fremont is.
They weren't at the meeting. They were one that was, they're two not at the meeting and they're, they're in contact. And they don't really have an assessor.
Anyway, that's fine, I'm just curious. Has Department of Revenue and Finance given you any?
They haven't, they haven't, the Department of Revenue hasn't addressed it yet. For me personally, the assessor is different than every other office, it's meant to be that way. And you guys don't have any say other than one vote over me, so you guys couldn't do anything. My, my board would have, first of all, vote to go to the Department of Revenue and say, I've done a malfeasance, misfeasance, non-feasance, one of these feasances. And then the Department of Revenue would have to come down and, and say, you can't be an assessor anymore. So I've got some pretty good protection if I decide to do something like that. I don't think it's right that I would have that or an elected official would have that and anybody else, if they decide to do the same thing, go up your own door. And like, it's gonna fall down on either department heads and if department heads refuse on you guys, make that call on whether they're gonna get fired or not. And I think it's fair for us to know moving forward as employees, is that what we're up against?
I have no intent to fire anybody. I hope this whole thing goes away. I hope it goes away. If it doesn't go away, I can't, if people choose not to vaccinate, I'm all for it. But if we, if we to avoid being not, if we to be in compliance, if that's gonna require testing and wearing masks, then I guess employees will have to make that choice. And then if department heads, I mean, I can see where you're going, but I have no desire. We need, our employees are good employees and we, we need our employees. My heart breaks for this. I mean, what, what do we do?
Stand, we vote. We get to vote.
You mentioned, you mentioned the Constitution.
Yeah.
This becomes federal law. Our oath also talks about upholding the Iowa Constitution and the federal Constitution.
And this is unconstitutional, this is not from the Constitution.
It has not been determined to be unconstitutional yet.
Well, I can be firm on that, and I have a vote. I took an oath to uphold the Constitution and liberty, you know what that is, liberty is? Allen, where you at?
So where, are you, are you gonna go forward this way?
Where's your vote? Are you on Supreme Court?
No, but I, as an elected official who took an oath.
I am an individual, we have individual liberty.
I know, Ann, Ann had something to say.
Well, I, I just want to clarify and I'm not, I just, the truth, the fact is that it has not been declared by a court of law unconstitutional yet. I'm not saying it's not gonna happen and I think they're gonna put this on the fast track to, to decide whether it is or is not. But it, whether I think it's unconstitutional or you, it doesn't make it so, just for compliance purposes. As long as I disagree with, but the other thing that I, the assessor was asking about, are you gonna terminate employees that don't comply? I would tell you, if, if it came to that part, that there's still other laws that the county has to comply with before terminating someone. So say someone came in and said, I'm not gonna get the vaccine and I'm not gonna, I can't mask and I can't do the testing for medical reasons. Then we shift gears and we go into what I would counsel them on compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act, which is doing, interacting with the process with the, with the employee. Okay, can we put you in a separate office? Can we have you work remotely? Can we do other different things to keep you on? So I, I just also want to send that message that it's not just, you know, you're not vaccinated, you're not gonna test, you're out the door. There would be a lengthy process before I would advise to terminate an employee because to make sure we're complying with a lot of other things. And there was one other thing I thought of and now I don't remember it. It'll come back to me at that.
Then in my opinion, and I would say any lawyer, when I solve, in my opinion, would say this is extremely unconstitutional, in my opinion. So I would like, no, Chuck's made his statement, Allen, where you at? We're gonna let Paige point here. We, we don't, we don't need to do that, I mean, I kinda wanna know.
I remember, just sorry, the other thing that I was gonna say is that you had also mentioned that you don't know of any other counties that are, are dealing with this. I can assure you that counties are amongst themselves talking about it behind the scenes, trying to figure out if they have to comply, if they don't and everything. But I don't think that a lot of them are pushing things out necessarily yet or having forums like this yet because they are just wanting to wait until the dust settles and not have to deal with it all if they don't. So, I mean, in, in one way you can say this is, is a good thing that the county's giving you an opportunity to get feedback before they have to implement it. You know, in other respects, you might think, well, why are you getting this all worked up if this thing is gonna be thrown out of court anyways? You know? So counties are, are looking into it in the background, they just might not be doing public forums about it because they don't want it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? We're getting close to noon, we don't have to quit at noon if there are other questions, but if there are, we'll let everybody get back to their daily schedule. I want to thank you all for coming. Keep us in your thoughts and in your prayers, we take this very seriously. There, there's not one answer that fits all, I guarantee you that. Ann, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
On that, I do disagree with that, there is one answer, no one to this. I don't agree with that statement. I don't know on this very clearly, for the record, for my grandkids someday, I don't know on this, if it's in the record.
Well, we don't have a vote today, but.
I know, but my opinion is no, and I believe silence is compliance and I, I am not silent on this, it's wrong.
Okay, do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you for joining us.